All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone. This is a great honor for me because when I first came down here to Palm Beach, I was invited by the Honorable Stanley Rombo to join the Civic Association and the Civic Association Board where I served, I believe, for two years. So I am very much aware of what the Civic has done for this town. And we are, we get along, I think, pretty famously in the council with the Civic Association, also the Citizens Association. We need these volunteer groups. We have such great talent there. These are men and women of distinguished careers before they came down here and even now when they are down here. So, for example, Woods Hole, as you mentioned, in other words, the Civic can do things. They have money. Council only has your money. So they can help us being the council and the town with that kind of background and with that kind of financial support, and they've done it many, many times. Just a little bit about me that you haven't heard. P S six, Manhattan, third generation of a real estate family. Now my daughter is the fourth generation. Thank God she's doing it and not me anymore. And so here we are. My great grand, great uncle Leo Gersonzang came to Palm Beach in 1939, stayed at the Ambassador Hotel, and the reason why he came here was he had just invented the Q-tip. And he had a heart condition, so suddenly he came here. So the family, as I say, has been here since that length of time. And one of the things we were very pleased to do was to donate that Noguchi sculpture that you see, that the four arts, that metal triangle when you come across the middle bridge, you look to your left, you see the thing at night, it's lit up. So that's, that's a gift of the family to the four arts and to the town of Palm Beach. As we mentioned, as Ned mentioned, you know, all that business about my background, he left for me to mention to you my, my years with Rudy Giuliani and the city of New York and what happened on nine eleven. What happened essentially was I was in charge of all New York City's lease and commercial real estate, procurement of goods and services, and many other, and director essentially of personnel for the 250,000 people who worked for the city of New York then, probably more now. And what happened on nine eleven was I came out of the subway and I looked up and there were people gasping and there was, one plane had just gone into the North Tower. And as I was looking further, all of a sudden we saw a shadow and the second plane hit the South Tower. Then everyone began to scream because they, we all realized it was not an accident. The first could have been an accident, the second you knew it wasn't. And that began one of the days that, of course, I'll never forget. My job was to contact the mayor and ask him to shut down the Sid five million square feet of space that the, that the city has leased or owned below Canal Street so that the, all the dust and debris wouldn't get into that system and poison the people that hadn't evacuated as of, as of yet. And the mayor, of course, he was in a basement at Barclay Street because World Trade, seven World Trade, where our emergency floor was, had been, was in danger of collapsing, of the, the tower falling on top of it, and eventually it did collapse. So I got the okay from the mayor to close these buildings down. And as I was there, he was saying goodbye to the chaplain of the fire department who was killed and all, and other of the high commissioners of the fire department. So that was the last, you know, I, we saw them. So what had happened was the city had not really prepared for this. We never thought that our, that our central emergency headquarters, which we had built at such a fantastic cost of money, time, and money, would be destroyed, which it was. But what it did was it knocked out all of our communication. There was no cellphone, there was no telephone, there was no way for us to communicate around the city. So that was the biggest problem that we, that we had. And I remember, you know, walking up to 21st Street, we had to evacuate Lower Manhattan. And I was in the room. When I got to 21st Street, which was the police headquarters at the time, walked up from municipal building, if you can imagine all this, and there in the room was the mayor, the governor, and the president on the phone. And the panic, and it wasn't panic in the room, there, I would say there was, there was apprehension that this was not the first attack, that there were going to be further attacks because we'd heard about the Pentagon and we'd heard about the other, the flight that went down in Pennsylvania. So there was, there was thinking at that time, maybe we should evacuate the whole island. We, we didn't know what to do, the island being Manhattan, of course. But I said, listen, I said, I don't think, I, I've seen what's happened, you know, I walked through it. I don't think there's any more problem, you know, above Houston Street at the time. Let's keep the rest of the city going and evacuate as we went along and just bar all traffic south of Houston Street, which we did, which they did. And that, we had to move the entire government, the entire government of the city of New York, which is huge, by the way. I mean, it's a real big entity. We moved it to the pier on West 57th Street. And there, my job was to go every day to Ground Zero to see what was going on regarding the thousand men and women that were working on shifts on the pile. And my job was to supply them with the goods and services that they needed, you know, to continue their work, everything from lights to body bags to food. And we had a tremendous uplift from people volunteering to send anything we wanted. You know, they paid for it, there was no question. We, we had no rules, we broke all, you know, there were no, we suspended all of the procurement regulations and everything that would have inhibited a fast response. So every day I would go into Ground Zero in the car and at the end of the day, we had to change the filter of the automobile, thankfully, thank God we did, because I wouldn't, I don't think I'd be here today. There was so much debris, there was, and as you know, so many people in the rescue suffered and still probably suffer today from that. So that was it. I did the best I could. I tried to open those buildings. I got some of them back open before the end of the year, which was the end of Mayor Giuliani's term. And that's what essentially I said, well, you know, I've given this a lot. I've been in public life now for more than twenty, twenty-five, twenty-two years, something like that. I said, I want to come down here. We'd always been here and I'd love to come down here. And we came down permanently in 2003, Regine and I, and we bought a house here and now we're doing our best again. I'm working, this time I'm working for nothing, but that's okay because you get what you pay for. And that's the, and that's essentially the way we are today. And I would tell you that I will never forget that day, September 11th, nine eleven, that I had to be there and I had to see what I saw.
Could you just kick it off? Thank you for doing that. Thank you. Could you just give us a little overview of how you see the town, maybe the most, most important issues?
Yeah, okay, sure. We, the council has done two great things so far, in the five years that I've been there. You know, the first was solving the pension problem. That is enormous, that was enormous. It could have destroyed the town financially and like it's destroying so many municipalities, so many states around the country who cannot possibly support all these pension obligations that they've incurred and are trying to reform them, and if they can't, they go under like Detroit. We led Florida in solving that problem. We, we created, you know, two different, two systems, not defined contribution for the first time as well as defined benefit plans. And those of you who, you know, know what I'm talking about, you'll understand it means the employees pay more, okay, into their own retirement. That helped, that solved that. The second thing we did was just last month, what we did was we found a way to solve the problem, how are we going to pay for the beach erosion, beach re-nourishment? And you couldn't have thought of a more controversial item than that because there were those who said the people on the beaches should pay as a district or a special assessment district, and those on the beaches said, well, you know, everyone else benefits. So I looked at it from a geological point of view. I said, here we are, a barrier island. We tilt. The island actually physically tilts from the ocean to the lake. So if you, if you supply sand to the ocean, you're really helping the people inland as well. And, and anyway, most people on the beach, certainly on the northern end, pay a lot, a lot more anyway because they, they live there. So we decided to go to Advolorum, which was assessments. In other words, we'll all pay a piece of this thing. And this does not solve the problem of the lake rising, which is another, which is another great danger, and it does not solve the problem of flood insurance, which is coming down the pike for all of us, especially if you have a mortgage. Even if you don't, there will be catch-ups as, as they go along and they'll end the sub, the feds will end the subsidy of the flood insurance. So there we have it. And in the first, here's the financial results of all of this. In 2015, which is budget year 2015, which is very near, it's, you know, coming up, the average cost of the beach restoration is $84 million over 10 years, but in certain year, in one year, you need a big slug of money to get the thing going in midtown and also south in reaches seven and eight. It'll be $409 per million. So if you're half, you know, if you're assessed at half a million, it'll be $240. And of course, if you're 10 million, you'll, you'll pay 10 times that for one year. After that, after 2015, it drops to, that's about 12, 12 and a half percent increase. After 2015, it goes down to 3% or about $101 per million. And that continues as far as, all the way out, you know, for the 10 year, for the 10 year program. So you can all figure, you know, more or less what you're going to be paying, and that's, that's what it is. The other, as we all know, there, there are two contentious issues in the town right now. The first one, of course, has been going on forever, which is the theater, what's going to happen over there? And we're going to, is the NIA really, you know, in the business of doing what they're doing? Where's the money going to come from? The next application for a storefront in, in the plaza is for a rental, car rental business, you know, which will be bringing cars over the bridge, whatever bridge we have, and obviously of the north end, and, and, you know, giving people the right, the ability to rent cars in the plaza. I don't know where that's going to succeed in the, in the council. I don't think so. Just looking around here, I know people aren't happy with that. And of course, the most contentious issue is what is going to happen to Roe v. Hansean Way. And there are two schools of thought here. And the, and I know the Civic Association position is in favor of doing this, and no one wants to see the gas station stay there. I mean, that's a given. However, we, some of us think that we may be going about this the wrong way, that to give these incentives to change the character of the street from commercial essentially to residential, which you will be doing with the PUD, will create something, in my opinion, that will look more like city place than, than it does today. The second thing is that we're setting a precedent for future development in this town by changing the, not only the zoning regulations, but the comprehensive plan. That will, that will increase the, the ability of future development in other parts of the city, the town. And as you know, people, I don't think here really want to see a lot of change, a lot of development, a lot of density increases. And of course, there's, there's a third thing, and that, the thing that bothers me the most about the PUD is that it is essentially for the benefit of one landowner. It is essentially for the benefit of the Testis site, and it means that they will be able to go from six units to thirteen, under CTS Commercial Town Serving, currently today, from six units to 13 units. They will be able to be three stories there, or a third story has to be in the back so it'll crowd up onto sunset. And as I say, it'll change the character of the street. It's being done essentially in a, as a form, in my opinion, of spot zoning. So there we have it. And we have not yet taken into consideration what happens when you consolidate these properties. There are certain, once you get to one and over one and a half acres like Testis is, if you consolidate others, you'll be able to get more density and park, you know. So I think that we should, we should proceed under the existing zoning with variances. Obviously, there are things that we don't just want to see there. We don't, we don't always see parking in the front like down the old Shiny Sheet site. There are things that the council can do to make this more livable. Anyway, what's going to happen, it looks like now, is that there will be, first legal challenge is to change in the comprehensive plan, and then it looks like there will be a referendum. You know, you need about 1,000 signatures to get this on the ballot. I don't think it will get on the ballot for the February, you know, the, the town election, if there is one. But I think it will be a special election, and again, it's going to, this is going to be one of the most divisive things the town has come across. in many years. So you, you know, pick your side, do what you want. And I, of course, have voted twice against this thing already. There's a third time coming up, and I'm going to listen to Penny and to others who are going to come there. If, if you want to say what you want, please come on the 13th to the council. Please give your opinion for or against because I think it'll help us define the issues further and see where we go from there. So with that in mind, I'm open for questions.
Yes, and that's the format from now on. Please just ask a little Q and A.
Bill, again, thanks for your leadership and support for, for One Town. One question that occurred to me, we'll be raising, what, 409 bucks or something like that?
In one year.
In one year.
Permanently.
But the county gets to take most of the money we raise in local taxes. We only keep, what, 18 bucks out of every?
Yes.
Or 18 cents out of every dollar. What will keep that money from going across the, across the inlet and being spent somewhere else?
I presume that's been accounted for in this calculation.
Okay.
Okay. Of course, we're, we're always starved by the county. We don't get really anything back. We've got back about $290,000 for the sand transfer plant. We send a tremendous amount of money over there. The bed tax, of course, which our hotels, big hotels pay for. We don't see it, and we've complained for years, the money, because it's the county that decides where the money that we send in is allocated.
Right.
And there are only two entities in the whole county that are on the minus position. It's the city of Boca Raton and the town of Palm Beach, and we're suffering accordingly.
I actually believe that we have our own, we're a taxing authority, we're a taxing municipality. We set our own village rates.
Yes.
Blue, and that village rate can go up by a certain percentage without requiring a, what they call a superboat, as long as it doesn't go over the rollback rate.
That's right. Yes.
And so whatever we decide to tax, that's ours.
Okay, so we have a firewall.
Whatever the county decides to tax, that's theirs. Whatever FINE decides, that's theirs. All that, there are separate taxing districts, there are about eight of them.
Okay, great.
And so the county doesn't decide what comes back to us, except where we are asking for help with sand or help with the sand transfer plant in this case. Gail went over and made a, a special request, and she got 200 and 17.
90,000, yeah. Yeah, I'd let's say three, yeah. We call it 300, but I don't think it's quite that. I don't think it's quite that. So that answers the question. This is all, we're going to keep this money and do a job. And it's a very extensive program in both the middle of the town, which really runs from, you know, Wells Road all the way south to where the, the midtown beach ends, and then, of course, in reaches seven and eight. We can't do much in reach eight yet because we don't have the approval of the environmental impact statement. That has to be submitted, you know, to, to the Department of, in Florida, the Florida FRO T or in the Florida Environmental Protection. Yeah, Environmental Protection. And the Corps of Engineers, too. I mean, it's, Bobby knows and the folks that are concerned on the south end know what the hoops are, that the town has to go through to spend its own money. Can you imagine? Okay, yes, sir.
Bill, related to that, could you just share some insight into what caused the council to vote unanimously in one direction and have the BMA and the mayor fit into this whole question about beach restoration?
Well, the mayor's been doing, Gail's been doing a fabulous job. The job of the mayor of the town of Palm Beach, who doesn't have a vote on the council except in case of a tie, is to be the ambassador to all the surrounding areas. And what she has been able to do is get together with, believe me, South Palm Beach, Manalapan, all the other jurisdictions on the, on the ocean, front on the ocean, and come up with a common way of making appeals to the Corps of Engineers and to the Department of Environmental Protection of Florida so that when we don't, each doesn't do its own and each is all together in one application essentially. And that is a time saver and a money saver. And it's, she, she has done a fabulous job along those lines. Why did the council decide to go to, I tell you, the, the basic reason outside of the geological reason, which I explained before, is that if we had set up special districts and we said the people on the ocean get, you know, get the most benefit so they pay the most, and then the people, what about the people in the second block? And they get some benefit, how much should they pay? Well, and then how about the others? So what you would be faced with is litigation beyond, beyond end because someone would say, challenge that, it's, it's, it's not a science, it's an art to decide which, which block gets what, what type of benefit. And, but by doing it Advolorum, then it cannot be challenged, and it won't be challenged as a matter of law. So that was the basic reason. We had to get the money or else we couldn't get the sand. And if any of you have walked around town and gone to the beaches and go up to Dunbar or Wells, I mean, you, the stairway, the wooden stairway, doesn't reach anywhere near the sand. And that's, that's in a lot of places in the town. They never had erosion before, by the way, of this nature. Yes, sir.
Bill, I wanted to ask, has there any research been done on any way to reduce the amount of erosion? Because if you just add the sand, it's going to eventually erode again. I mean, is there any, like, artificial reef program or any type of?
Yeah, there's, artificial, artificial reefs were tried in, just to the north of here, off Singer Island. They tried to put it in, and, and D E P would not let them, okay? They don't want anything out there because to break the waves, you're also doing something to be nefarious to the little animals, you know, that live there. But groynes, which are possible, groynes, you know, we have plenty of them, most of them in the town. There are many groynes up and down, many, you can see some of them at low tide, they're in pretty bad shape. And the Breakers has, you know, protected itself with those big bowlers. The groynes, however, don't add sand, they, they, they're not, they're not considered, you know, something that will protect the island because the water will come in anyway on either side of them. It may help certain areas and may starve others. So it's being looked into, that if it's done can be bonded. The Sea Wall across from the Country Club, that can be bonded, too. And that will be, you know, that will be something that we don't pay as you go, it'll be something that we pay through, through, you know, a bond issue. Good time to borrow money now, of course, because of low interest rates.
And the Woods Hole report, Bill, did a lot of basic research of the kind.
That's exactly right. They, yeah, we just didn't do, you know, none of us are marine engineers. I don't know what we are, but we certainly got that in the town council. But we did rely on Woods Hole and we did want, again, I want to thank the Civic Association for making that all possible and helping us with it. Yes, sir.
I have three minor questions, nothing to do with you, but with the city management.
Town management.
One, town management. I beg your pardon. One is the parking reinforcement cars constantly are blinking, that distract the drivers and may cause accident. If they stop somewhere to give a ticket, if somebody has parked somewhere wrong, that's reasonable to have that blinking. But driving with the blinking car constantly, I have retired, but I have treated a lot of people who were involved in a serious accident because of that distraction.
You're talking about which?
Parking cars, the reinforcement.
Oh, oh, the code, you like those?
The yellow lights that is constantly. That should not be blinking when you're driving around. Please let them know, have a committee look at that. If they stop somewhere and want tickets, someone, that's different.
That's something you should ask Chief Bluen because, well, let me answer that. Because those, those cars are, they blink, I think, to warn others behind them that they're going to be a sudden stop because of what they do, of course, they stop and they write tickets. So there's a safety angle and let's, let's, code enforcement is under the control of the police department, so we'll ask Kirk Bluen, what do you think?
Between bad and worse, bad is better than worse. What they are doing is worse. The second thing is about the grass cutting inside the town that the trees keep growing in the street, they don't reinforce it properly. I had to drive around Mar-a-Lago, then when I saw grass is growing in the road and I almost hit someone as I was going toward Southern Boulevard Bridge, then I brought it to declare his attention, but I play tennis with, and they have cut it some.
And cut it back, yes.
But if you look at many other streets, they are constantly, the trees are coming that a car can heat the branches of the palm trees and so on. Why don't they take care of us?
Well, here we, we've got to rely to a certain degree on all of us to report that sort of thing because obviously the, the code enforcement doesn't go down every street every day and look at it. We, listen, we live in a, in a semi-tropical climate, there, things grow like crazy around here. And there are all sorts of rules and regulations in the town about cutting back your hedges, for example, so you don't block the sidewalk, mowing your lawn so you don't have too, too high a lawn and distract and sort of impinge it properly on your neighbor's property values. So remember, in Palm Beach, we live cheek by jowl. We live cheek by jowl. And I want to say something now, if I may. My job is to maintain the cachet of Palm Beach. What do I mean by the cachet of Palm Beach? I mean, why do people, whether they be millionaires or ordinary millionaires or ordinary billionaires, want to come to Palm Beach and pay twice as much for a smaller piece of property than they can just a few miles away from here? And it's because they want to live in the town of Palm Beach with, with that name, which is worldwide famous. So we have to be very careful what we do around here. You know, people that come in and buy, they sort of, you know, intuitively like it the way it is. If we change it too much, maybe they don't, they won't like it the way it would be. So we've got to be very careful here. And this town has to be, has to remain a magnet for all sorts of people from all over the world who are willing to support in large part, you know, our tax base because we all benefit from that. That's my theory. Yes.
Bill, you've obviously had a little bit of governmental experience before your current position. So you, I'm sure, had some idea what to expect once you took the seat up on the dais. What, in light of that, has been your biggest disappointment and your biggest positive surprise?
Well, up to the time I came to Palm Beach and ran for the council, I was always an appointed official. I was appointed by John Lindsay, I was appointed by President Reagan, and reappointed by President Bush Senior, and of course, I was appointed by Rudy Giuliani. But I, I spent a year in honest work at Bear Stearns while I was still, don't blame me. I mean, it was, it was okay then. What should I say? So anyway, when you, you, when you're responsible in a small entity like the town, you are very near the people. You hear things like, you know, my grass is too long, or this guy's not doing any. This is real government. The town affects you more probably than anything else except on April 15th, you know, when you pay your, your big time taxes. So that's the one thing that I really didn't, didn't expect that much of, but I happen to like it. I like people, so I just, just did work. Well, the other thing is, of course, in the town council, there, there are people that have different opinions, but I must say, we sort of stick together on the big stuff. Now, we may not stick together on the PUD, but at least we respect each other's opinions because you've got very accomplished people on that town council. Look at Bob Wildrick. I mean, he's a titan of the apparel industry. You have David Rossa, who's been incredibly successful, and now more so with Fidelity. You have Dick Clyde, who is a lawyer and a, has experience even more so than, than anyone else on the council. You have Michael Pacillo, who obviously is, has, has... You have Michael Basillo, who obviously is, has the ability to come up with a plan, which is complicated, and worked for more than a year on it. So whether you like it or not, that's a lot of work, that's a lot of energy, that's a lot of effort. And I, and we're all just devoted to you. We love the town. And one of the ways in which you can serve the town is by going through this procedure of being a council person. And let me tell you, you know, people think you run for office, and that's it, you go to two meetings a month. That's not so. You need to be briefed before every meeting by the town manager and by the heads of the planning and zoning. And you have to, you have to know issues and read a book this thick, or at least go through the important parts of it. You have to go to special meetings, and we have them all the time. You have to go to committee meetings within the council, like I'm on Ethics and the other committee that I serve on. We each have areas of responsibility, and you really have to go to those meetings. I go to all the meetings. When I'm here in town for the last 10 years, essentially even before I was on the council, I go, I mean, it's crazy, P and Z, and I go to R Comm, and I go to Landmark, I go to their meetings, and your meetings, and your outings, got outings. And it just, but the only good thing, again, I mean, I learn a lot, of course. And I'm interested, I'm intellectually stimulated by what goes on in those, in those boards and commissions. There's also a retirement board, and there's an investment board, which, you know, we have about $75 million here to invest with the pensions. So that's, Michael sees me every time of the time, and he does a fabulous job, by the way. You've got to give him the applause. I mean, he should be running, you know, everyone else's money, not just the town's. So there we are with all those meetings, and at least I don't have to read the minutes. Don't have to read the minutes. The minutes of each of the meetings are like this, everyone has a lot to say. And all these, we've got over 60 people working, you know, a lot of hours and not being paid. And it's always been that way in the town. That's one of the wonderful things about this town, is the volunteerism. No one does anything here, they, in regard to the town government, in all its aspects that they really don't want to do, because why, they don't have to do it, but they want to do it. And that's the great thing about Palm Beach. That's, I've said enough.
I'll take a few more questions.
Okay, got to sit down. Got to, yes, Robin?
First, I'd like to thank you for your decade-long devotion to this town. I don't think that people realize the extent that you really put all those hours in, but I've known you for a long time, so I personally want to thank you. Second question is the bike path. Do you have an estimated, I, we walk the bike path every day, and there are times when literally it looks like parks are sandstone. And I was wondering if you could?
Sorry, Robin.
Give us a?
Okay.
He has to go to city council meeting.
No, 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 no. The bike path is a real problem, because what they're doing, there's, they're extending the sewer line from further north, just below the country club, all the way down to very near here. That has to be done, because otherwise, you have, you have the smells and the corroded pipe underneath. But what's more worrisome, because that can be fixed by us, the town, what we really have a problem with is the rise of the lake. Even, you saw the paper, I think, the other day. I mean, that's really dangerous. And so the council has to, you know, take this up. We need, first of all, we need the flood maps that are coming out from the federal government on insurance. And it's going to show, I'm sure, large areas of the town that are in the flood, so-called flood plain. And we're contest, the town, I believe, is contesting those maps, because they are so stringent. And, but we do have a physical problem. Now, what are we going to do? Are we going to do what we did at the ocean side, ask people living on the lake that they must raise their, you know, their barriers further, their seawalls further? Some of, there's already been an increase in the, if you, you know, if you build a house or you renovate it, to go up higher than before. But I don't think that's going to hold. And if we have a storm, the real danger is the storm, water surge, not so much the wind. The wind's bad enough, but it's the rising of the lake, of the water coming in through the inlet, and coming down and rise, and damaging these houses. I know several people who have already, in the prior years, you know, when we had the storms, the hurricanes, the water was up to their houses on the lake, went over the seawall, went over the bike trail. And the bike trail becomes unusable, of course, for long periods of time. So that's, this is it, kids. We're here on a barrier island, where we're geologically meant to protect West Palm Beach, of all places, because that's what a barrier island does. Yes, sir?
Why is the lake a problem? Is that climate change?
Okay. Whatever it is, whatever the cause is, it is going to happen probably more frequently. To the degree it's attributable to climate change, I cannot tell you, because I don't know. But I do know that we have to protect the town further. And I think that we're going to have to take that up into whether to make it mandatory or to keep it the way it is more or less now, which is voluntary, except when you're building a new house, you have to build it up to a certain level, you know, the seven-foot level of the house. That's something the town will have to decide in the near future. Yes, yes, Amy?
I just encountered a problem that I'd never encountered before. I think it's wonderful, we have a new thriving eatery in Point Santa Plaza, and I'm not going to get into any of that at all. It's nice to see new businesses thriving, but I use a post office box for my mail, and Saturday evening, when I went to try to pick up my mail, coming across the bridge and driving in, I literally couldn't. I had nowhere to put my car. And I don't know if this is a council issue or not.
It definitely is a council issue. This is what we were afraid of all along, that you're talking about essentially?
I think there were places in the new restaurant's valet area, but I was hesitant to drive into their valet area. And to turn down towards the grill, I think that would have, they were actually backed up there. I literally just drove out, and I didn't get my mail, I got back on Sunday.
That is the big problem regarding the whole use of the Royal Point Santa Plaza. I voted against the special exception for the restaurant. I mean, and I've been there since, I was afraid it would turn into what it may be turning into, which is just a magnet for people to come from, you know, all over the area, because they can't, the population, remember, the population of Palm Beach is so small.
Eight trystons, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get into that one. The population of the island is so small, even with your guests and your, you know, people that visit, that go to the hotels. I was, I go to that restaurant and look for Palm Beachers. And I can sort of, you know, I know many of them, or they say hello to me, so what, so far, so good. But it may be just because all Palm Beachers love to go to new restaurants that they open, right? They say, I've been there, you know, and I, you know. So, but we, they are, and can you imagine if the theater ever opens? And of course, they keep asking, the Del Frisco's folks, you know, the owners, of course, keep asking for more and more. They wanted, we, I was against the weekend, they want, they're getting the weekend, they wanted lunch on the weekend. They keep chipping away, chipping away, and getting more, to get more business and more service and more money. I mean, you know, it's a business, it's not a charity. So, as I, and I mentioned before you came in, they now want to set up a car, automobile rental in the plaza. You can imagine that, right? Coming across the bridge, they'll have to deliver the mail to you personally to make it, to get it through the council. And anyway, the restaurants, let's talk about the restaurants.
Perhaps there should just be two, you know, 15-minute post office parking spaces in the first row before you even make the turn into the post office.
Well, they seem to be a place for post office. I use that, but I use it in the morning when I go, you know, I don't mail in. Yeah, you have a box, it's different.
But not on a Saturday night, you can't even make that turn.
That is incredible. All right.
She's right.
All right.
And they're very protective of their spots, their spots.
Yeah, you mean the valets of the restaurant.
So, you know, the first lane that's not their valet area, that's the big area, that's not the lane by the building, if maybe there were just two spots set aside at the beginning of that, for, you know, after 6:00 P.M. or so, I don't?
Yeah, because the post office, you can go into your box at any time of the day, at 24 hours. So that will run into all of the other things going on there. And now they want to, they have to create under law handicap parking, you know, the special, the blue stuff, and that takes away a few more parking spaces, okay? And the town council has been sort of holding all of this up till the November meeting, because we want to know what's going on with the, with the theaters. You know, is this, is this real, or is it a theater? We don't know.
Well, is there, Bill, I'm sorry, is there a business case to, I mean, you've been an eloquent advocate for the theater. Is there a business case to be made for this theater, given Kravitz Across the River, and, you know, the Lake Worth, and all these other theater groups going on?
You know, you're right, and there've been many letters written, and it's going to cost $30 million, who's going to come up with that, and how are you going to operate that, just to fix it up? How are you going to operate it? And all of those are problems, but you've got to let the market decide. In other words, if they are, if this NIA, National Institute of the Arts, really has that kind of backing, well, you know, it'd be great, because we'd get that building alive again. So we'll wait, we'll wait and see, but I think it's a very dicey venture economically. It certainly won't be a moneymaker, it certainly would be a community service, nonprofit operation. It'll be nonprofit anyway. Yes, man?
As a retail business owner here at the Royal Point Santa area, one of the big problems is parking. And pud or no pud, it isn't going to go away. I mean, you're not going to be able to have any kind of parking for the restaurants on that block, the commercial establishments, the service businesses. I can't tell you how many times people come in to my shop and say, gee, I'd like to keep shopping, but I only have six minutes, okay? And they are not going to go out after they've eaten and shop for six minutes, and circle the block for 12 times, trying to find a spot where then the little yellow people with the lights come and swoop in. And it really is a problem. Now, Worth Avenue and that district has a venue for parking in the parking lots, okay? You have the option to pay or not pay, and if a merchant chips in for that parking payment, that's terrific. But we don't have another option in this side of town. And I really don't understand why, perhaps in the future, with different puds and Royal Point Santa Plaza, whatever, some type of system cannot be organized where there is parking that the town can gain revenue on, because half of the year, you could park tanks in the street, and the rest of the half of the year, when everybody's here, you can't run in to get an ice cream.
You're 100% right about the condition. The pud, I think, on the test site will allow for underground parking for their new people. However, that is not going to help you, because, you know, your customers and others that are going to come in there will not have that kind of parking. So they, the pud will require more people on the street, if those apartments are built outside of the test site, which presumably has, could benefit from underground parking from the Sunset Avenue side. What is the solution to all of this? You know, the solution theoretically, which is not going to happen, would be for the town to build a municipal garage. And we, I don't think that's going to happen. It's, it really is something that a lot of people would be opposed to. The argument will be made, well, more people will come. You know, if you give them more space, more people will come, you'll still have the same condition, plus municipal garage, and coming in and out, the smells and all of that. So I don't exactly know what the answer is. Maybe it is to increase, you have one hour parking in front of your store, maybe it's to increase it to two hours. We looked at that again, and I think that would be helpful, so that people would be able to eat and do, you know, do some reasonable amount of time for shopping. Yes, sir?
The government is already a problem, as we've heard, and Del Frisco's is making it worse. How can we possibly be thinking about reopening a theater there?
Yeah, you see, almost the trouble, the trouble with, the trouble, I wouldn't say it's the trouble of Palm Beach. One of the attractivenesses of Palm Beach is that everyone wants to come here, even if they don't, you know, buy houses, as I mentioned before, they want to come here to eat, they want to come here to walk the streets. They certainly want to come to Worth Avenue, which has now been voted the number three top street in the country. But it's going to, it's going to be with the next two restaurants opening, you know, there's something called a meat market that's going to open up on Bradley's Place, where the old, the Greek Steak House was and Club Wye before that. Those are grandfathered in. In other words, it's not up to the council to say no, like I tried to say no with Del Frisco's. And also, of course, the old Amici Town Hall is going to, is going to open, and it's going to be called Bricktops. And you know why it's called Bricktops? You know who she was? Bricktops was, in the 1920s and '30s in Paris, had her own nightclub. She was a black lady who had red hair, dyed her hair red, and that's how she got to be known as Bricktops. She was like the regime of that era. And my wife happened to meet her many years later, when she came to California, like everyone else does. So that's what you're going to have there, and you can look on these menus online, but I don't know how much steak this town can eat. How much steak can the town eat? Everywhere you go, it's steak, right? Except for maybe Yamato and a couple of other small places.
The opening of outlet mall in Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard is going to affect Worth Avenue and everywhere else.
That's a good point.
I think we should wait for a couple of years after that outlet was opened to make the final decision.
Well, here's, I agree with you. It depends on what the quality of the stores are going to be in that new mall. You know what I'm talking about, the mall that's opening up on Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. So I see, you know, I see Tommy Hilfinger, they mentioned, and they mentioned some other store. These are not, as long as they don't open, if they open a Tiffany's there, or a K here, which they're not going to do, would be very harmful to Worth Avenue if they, if they lower their prices, you know, as an outlet. But it will take away some business, yes, because we've got two new French clothing stores opening up on Worth Avenue this season. And I presume it's the same, you know, quality of merchandise, because I never heard of the stores. So, you know, it's not like Hermes or something. Yes, Penny?
Bill, how do you see all the condo development in West Palm Beach, right along the shoreline, impacting us?
Well, of course, it'll impact us.
I know we can't do anything about it.
Well, of course, it'll impact us. It impacts us visually, but it really will impact us for traffic again. More people will want to come. If you live on Flagler Drive, like in the Watermonks, where do you spend most of your time? Here, right? So by building these large condominiums, they are going to increase that amount of business, which maybe, you know, to some of the retailers, it may be good, but it's just going to, you know, overwhelm this place, I'm afraid. And we must not become like many other places on, in South Florida along the ocean. We must maintain our cachet, we must keep this town small, we must keep this town livable. And that's what I intend to do, that's what I've always done, and with your help, I'll continue to. Thank you very much. Are there any others? One more, we have one more?
Sure.
Not a question, just a comment. We have Richard Bradcliff back there, who is president, CEO of our League of Cities, and I'm so proud to tell you that Palm Beach belongs to the League of Cities, and our mayor is on his board.
Great, right. You know, even though, even though, in answer to that, even though we are an island, and we want to maintain, you know, our cachet, so to speak, we still live in a large pool of people. And we have to get along with those best we can, and they have, we have to help them when we can, and they in turn have a big say in what goes on here, whether, you know, we sort of like it or not. Otherwise, we'd have to take the bridges down and go by ferry.
Join me in a round of applause for our guest. That was wonderful. I just want to thank you on behalf of the Civic Association. Thanks for coming, look forward to seeing you next month, and I think Mr. Diamond will stay around a few minutes if you'd like to talk to him.